I call the Glassboro zoning board of adjustments regular business meeting to order March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Turk, can you, uh, handle it?
Yeah, I'm gonna handle it right now.
Turk, can you read the opening statement, please?
Pursuant to the open public meeting act, I hereby announce that adequate notice this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by Doc to schedule the meetings for the year two thousand twenty-three. His schedule was set to the South Jersey Times, the Borough Clerk, and posted on the Merrill Paul bulletin board.
All right, please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Present.
Mr. Jimenez is excused, Mr. Santor is excused, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Perner will be late, Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mr. Costabun.
Here.
And Ms. Adamson.
Here.
Mr. Ellis, can you swear in our professionals, please?
Certainly. Uh, I'd ask each of you to raise your, your right hand. Each of you swear firm testimony about to give us true and correct, best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
Yes.
Well, that's two yeses, so take it away, Mr. Chair.
All right, everybody has a copy of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes as printed.
I'll take an motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so be it. All right, everybody has a copy of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I make my request to pay all the bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so be it. Is there any incoming or outgoing correspondence?
Uh, there was one and I included it, and Mr. Ellis will take care of it at the resolution time.
Great. All right, at this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on any item that is not currently on the agenda for this evening? Okay. Let's start off with ZB twenty-three dash zero three Vision Stream, two forty-five East High Street, block four thirteen, lot fourteen. This is zone R five. We're looking at the preliminary and final site plan approval to build a three-story eighty-nine unit apartment building.
Would you like anyone standing here? Yeah, it's all live, right?
Yep, we're all live.
Thank you so much, folks. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Kevin Taduch. I'm the owner and principal attorney of PD Law, Manhattan Field, New Jersey. For the record, my last name is spelled D-I-D-U-C-H and pronounced Taduch. And it is my privilege this evening to present to you a preliminary and final site plan approval application for Vision Stream LLC. Property in question is specifically located at two forty-five East High Street in the borough. Uh, by way of a resolution, this board, as it should be called, authorized approval for a three-story eighty-nine unit, uh, market rate apartment complex. Uh, that was back, uh, earlier this year. And I do have standing to my left, Mr. Eric Littlehouse, who, um, has, uh, some testimony. He would like to present with respect to the application. We've also had this application reviewed by the board and its professionals. We're gracious for their time and consideration as well. Um, but I would let Mr. Littlehouse begin his presentation by explaining a little bit about what it is that we're doing and how we're gonna do it. Eric?
Is, that's your sole witness?
That is gonna be, well, we do have Mr. Uh, Andy Jane here as well. He's the owner of the, of the building, but he could also testify with respect to how.
It's, I mean, it's not burdensome one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Then let's start right here, because here's the gentleman. So I want to ask you to raise your right hand. And you swear firm testimony about to give us true and correct, the best your knowledge of information and belief?
Uh, yes, it is.
Well, there you go. Take it away, counsel.
Great. Um, Mr. Littlehouse, if you could, um, provide the board with direction as to what these two exhibits are that we have here. Um, I believe the board should have already received copies of these in advance. If not, I have a couple of extra handouts here I can provide.
So on the right is the, uh, building elevation. Uh, the top half of that is the overall building, and the bottom half of the building elevation is a more detailed view of the one side of the building. And on the left-hand side is a rendered site plan, uh, showing the, the site, the surrounding features with the aerial and, um, the proposed improvements that were, uh, have forth.
So is it fair to say, counsel, that, uh, A one is the colorized elevations?
A one, I think that's fair.
And then, um, uh, A two will be a colorized, uh, site plan sheet?
That's correct, yes.
All right, there you go.
So the plan in front of you, the site plan in front of you, uh, is proposing a three-story eighty-nine unit building, uh, on seven acres known as block four thirteen, lot fourteen. Is located on the north side of High Street, US, uh, Route three twenty-two. The building will contain a total of eighty-nine units, fifty-nine one-bedroom units and thirty-two bedroom units. The current plan shows a hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces. Uh, it's an increase of ten parking spaces from when we were here. Um, we get our use variance, because that was indicated and brought up, so we were able to get a ten additional parking spaces, which is just shy of two parking spaces per unit, so, um.
So, I'm sorry, your new total's what now?
Uh, one hundred and seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven.
Yes.
Thank you.
The access for the site, we have two access to the site. The one on the, uh, east, um, is a twenty-four foot wide drive aisle. The one on the west, we were proposing at twenty feet. I've had conversations with Mr. Costabun from Sickles' office. We're gonna try to increase that at least to twenty-two feet, uh, if not twenty-four feet at the beginning, and then neck down along the side of the building to get, uh, to the rear of the property. There is no parking being proposed on it. It is just for two-way traffic, uh, along, uh, along the, uh, side there. The act, pedestrian access into the building, uh, will be from the north side or the rear side of the building. There's three pedestrian accesses into the building from the main parking lot. Um, from the elevation, you can see there are patios and doorways, but those are not direct access points. Um, from the exterior, all the entrances, it's a center hallway, uh, apartment building with the, the main accesses at the, the rear of the building. The site will be serviced by two small-scale infiltration basins, one located on the east side and the other one located on the north side of the property, both discharging to an existing wetlands area located in the northeast corner of the property. Will be serviced by public water, which is located on the south side of three twenty-two, and public sewer. There is a manhole located to the, the west or near the west, uh, or west entrance. Um, we are asking for, uh, variance on parking space size. We're proposing nine by eighteen, which is, uh, in accordance or allowed per the RSIA standards. Um, but I know it's, uh, different from what's in the, the borough code. Uh, I believe a nine by eighteen foot space is sufficient for apartments, uh, relatively low turnover, um, and it also helps minimize the amount of impervious coverage that gets proposed. In addition, we're, uh, asking for a variance to propose twenty-foot light poles at the rear. Uh, the overall building is, you know, fifty feet tall. We think a twenty-foot light pole is, uh, reasonable in comparison to the building height, um, uh, in, in these parking areas at the rear. Uh, there was questions about the trash enclosure. Um, specifically pickup. We talked to the client. He says trash is gonna be picked up, um, three times a week there, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There is a separate recycling container and a separate trash container, uh, and there was a comment, um, about, uh, bulk trash. Um, we agreed to widen up or lengthen up the trash enclosure to leave a small area for bulk trash. If anybody's moving out, put a mattress or an old couch or something like that that's able to get picked up by, by the, uh, trash, um, personnel. And I believe that's the extent of my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So, um, for those of you who were with us when we had our use variance approved, um.
No, no one's died.
No one has died, no, not yet. Uh, it was still here, right? So, uh, you recall some of the issues that we talked about at that time. We've received your feedback. We've run with that ball. So the intention of behind this plan is to show you that we obviously have our best intentions and foot forward with the borough, um, to be a community partner. And as Mr. Littlehouse has expressed, that's probably our intention as well. So if there's any questions, uh, certainly open that up to the board. Otherwise, um, Mrs. Solicitor and Mr. Chairman, we would relieve it to the professionals to address any additional questions or comments they may have.
Do I have any questions?
No.
Mr. Costabun?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't run through every part of the letter, but I touched on some high points. The location of the, uh, exterior trash enclosure. Any, um, just with the frequency of use, um, and how it's sort of remote to the building, any, any usage, uh, issues with, with residents going back and forth from that location in the back left corner?
Eric?
Yeah, we, we provided a sidewalk, actually, uh, and a, a, a access point on the side of that, you know, direct access to sidewalk along the back of the building and around. Um, you know, to make it easier for pedestrians to get to their, their trash to put out in that location, uh, and then you could, you know, go back to their, their apartment.
Thank you, and I, I just wanted to touch on the parking space size. The, um, the nine by eighteen spaces, and no objection from me on that. It is very much a typical parking space size and, and it does comply with the residential spread improvement standards. Um, I didn't want to talk about the driveway widths. I, it was not in my letter, although there is one, one drive aisle in the parking lot that's twenty-two feet, where the ordinance minimum is twenty-four, so I, I believe if the applicant would like to ask for a waiver on that standard, I wouldn't have any objection to it. Um, it's pretty nondescript, which is why I didn't even cite it at first, but I, I believe it, it should be, it should be, the board should consider it.
That's a fair statement. You would ask for a waiver on it?
Yeah, that's a fair statement from, from Mr. Costabun. Yeah, we would request that waiver at this time.
And staying on the theme of driveway widths, on the left side, Mr. Littlehouse mentioned it, but on, on the left side of the site plan rendering, the driveway that leads to the back is twenty feet, only twenty feet wide, which is quite, quite narrow for, for the use that it's going to see. There is, there is, the ordinance does allow a twenty-foot wide driveway for multifamily, so there is some support for it, but I feel like my interpretation is that multifamily is more like a duplex or like an over-under type thing or a four-unit condo, not an eighty-nine unit building, and especially given the speed on, that sometimes we see on High Street and the, the turning movement in, a wider width is necessary, so uh, they've agreed to widen that near the road. Basically, in the front yard, it'll be wider, then transitioned back to the twenty feet. Um, which, which the twenty feet, the, meet, meeting the driveway, meeting driveway width.
And for visual purposes, Mr. Costabun, you referring to this driveway here, correct?
Yes, yeah, right.
Okay, so we'll be cutting out a portion of this section here just to widen it to give more visible access.
And then it'll wind up at twenty-four.
That's right.
I also did want to mention from the, the, um, between the, the concept plan that was presented at the use variant here again now, there was a loading space, actually, uh, an oversized parking space that is not included in the one hundred and seventy spaces, just for box trucks to, to, uh, um, come and go and, and, uh, provide a, a dedicated loading space independent of the parking spaces for tenants to move in and, and move out. And I can just touch briefly on store water. There, there is the, the latest, the latest rules. Uh, this, this design meets all the high points, and I had a, a series of comments related to some details, and, um, Mr. Littlehouse has responded with a letter indicating that he would have agreed to revise, um, he had no disagreement with, with all the detailed comments and, and the items there, and he would agree to revise those. Um, so unless anyone has any questions for me, that, that's all, that's the high points of my letter.
Thank you.
Mrs. Adamson?
Um, going through our letter, uh, just under the table, will you be complying? I know you're gonna provide calculations with the building cover, the paving cover, and the percent landscape, um, with the percentages, the required percentages.
Uh, yes, we will include that in the revised plans, correct?
And, uh, Mr. Littlehouse, uh, provided a letter in response to our, uh, comments, so I, I agree with most of them. There's some comments, uh, there's some testimony that's required as far as the parking spaces. Will they be assigned with each unit? Will any of the parking spaces be assigned?
I apologize. I did get an answer on that, and, and the applicant has indicated they will not be assigned parking spaces to individual units.
I, I think that's more common.
Standard practice, right, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Um, another thing with parking, and I do not see in our letter, is, uh, make-ready, uh, parking spaces for electric vehicles. I don't see them on this plan.
Uh, they're, they're, th- those items were, Mr. Costabun actually brought them up in his letter, and we completely agree to add, um, the necessary spaces.
Oh, okay. So you're gonna add, uh, exactly.
Do we know approximately where, Eric? On the site, we can put those.
Uh, I mean, this.
These seem to be a pretty wide range, but.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're more than likely, because one of them has to be handicap accessible, so that's gonna be up near where the rest of the handicap spots are directly behind the building.
Mm-hmm, okay. Right here.
And then more than likely, the, the, kind of the first row, um, uh, would be the other spaces, the, you know, I don't think.
So not visible to the street behind the building, right?
Correct, yes, behind the building, not visible to the street.
And, uh, testimony regarding the trash and recycling storage?
Yep, so trash and recycling again is, uh, we have a separate recycling and trash. It's gonna get picked up three times a week, and we're gonna increase the size of the trash enclosure to allow for, um, bulk items, mattresses and such to go there until they get picked up by, by the trash service.
And how about the signage? Uh, there's no details for signage. Any, uh, signage on the building or any, um, pre-standing signs or monument signs?
The. The, the. The, the applicant will come back in a separate application with, with signage.
The intention is to comply with the existing.
I was gonna say, you either meet the ordinance or we'll see you again.
Yeah.
Sure, okay.
And, uh, testimony regarding, uh, portable housing requirements? Can you provide testimony that you, um, comply with all?
I mean, to the extent those requirements would apply to such a project, we would, of course, comply with those and make the available units, but being, uh, I don't believe that we are under an obligation to, uh, render any specific, uh, units as affordable.
Yeah, enough, and I'm aware.
Correct.
Not, you would just have to be the, be the one and a half or something.
Correct, yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
And... That's all we have. The applicant did, they did provide a, uh, a response letter, which is very helpful, so, uh, I, I agree with their responses. You are requesting some waivers? Uh, are you gonna go over those waivers, justification for the waiver request?
Um, Eric, if you wanna.
Yep, so, so the, the, the landscaping, um, waiver, we had talked about adding additional landscaping along the, the buffer along between, um, High Street and, and the building, but there is a requirement to have a certain number of shade trees per unit. Um, we're requesting a waiver on that, the general shape of this, this, the site, the need to have multiple basins now, that, uh, taking up space. We are saving a, you know, a large portion. Obviously, it's, most of it's wetlands, but in the back rear, um, I mean, so we have a pretty good buffer between us and the existing apartment complex on that side, and we agreed to, uh, increase the, uh, landscaping buffer along, again, High Street. Um, that, that was the, the housing landscape. The buff, the buffer, um, we talked about in, increasing that, um, there, but also we have the buffer between us and the neighboring property, um, that we're proposing, uh, landscaping in, in that location and the light levels. Um, we had indicated that twenty foot, we feel is sufficient for this type of parking lot and the size of building that's adjacent to it.
And Eric, the footprint of that lighting, that twenty-foot lighting as opposed to the standard what's required in the ordinance?
Yeah, the.
There's no crossover or pollution into other neighboring areas and things like that, correct?
No, yeah, we, yeah, and, and again, we agree.
No impact.
We agreed to the, the, here to the lighting levels and provide the point-by-point, um, lighting plan back with the revised plans.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that's just about it, and let me know if you have any questions or comments?
Board have any other questions?
Well, one of the things that we didn't, I, I hadn't heard discussed in that is that, uh, thinking in terms of the fire engines, anything of that particular nature, fire and safety, anything of that nature? Um, I'm looking at the minimum space in which that you have there as far as the entrance ways. You know, thinking, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, is that gonna be sufficient enough to, especially with everything in the back, the entrance ways in the back and all, is that gonna be sufficient enough to allow this fire truck to come in and?
So there was an item in, uh, Mr. Costabun's letter in regards to providing, uh, truck turning and maneuver in and out of the site. We agreed to do that, so we'll, we'll have that as part of the, the revised plans.
Right, so, and we did also review and incorporate a part of the analysis, the turn radius in the parking lot to make sure we had enough space in case somebody's gotta turn a certain way, and we meet those standards.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. That was a good question.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Is there anybody from the public would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Since I don't see anybody from the public, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public portion?
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Pleasure to the board?
So, so you're here for preliminary and final site plan, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
Just as.
With all the waivers out and the.
Right, they're spread on the record.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would approve the, uh, motions, the, the, the first one, and with all the changes that the gentleman of, uh, presented to us.
So fair to say, motion to, to approve preliminary and final site plan? With those agreements, because they did talk about Mr. Costabun's letter and Ms. Adamson's letter and changes with trash enclosure, so that's all gonna be included in there?
Yes.
Is that okay?
That's good.
But there you go, Mr. Chair.
Second move.
Roll call up?
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
Mr. Noonan.
Four.
Thank you very much, folks.
Well, thank you.
Change your time.
Good to see you.
You too.
Always. See, if it is, we're gonna, we're gonna hop to one of them a little, uh, junket. Put a fresh party.
All right, next up is ZB twenty-three dash zero six PVA Investments, one forty-nine to one fifty-one South Delsey Drive, block four twenty-eight, lot one, zone C four. We're looking for amended use variance to allow one eighteen-unit and one twenty-unit apartment building instead of the approved two twenty-unit apartment buildings.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm going to reintroduce myself. I'm Bob DeSanto, representing the applicant. I just, I'd like to do this. Apologize to the board. I just returned from vacation and I couldn't get back the time and time properly present. I feel like my cousin did.
You look fine. You look great. Good to see you.
He was done with Frankie.
Yeah, no disrespect, I should.
You're fine.
As the chairman indicated, we're seeking a minor reduction modification of the previous use variance granted by this board. By resolution twenty-two zero seven, the board granted a use variance and certain bulk variances to permit an eighteen-unit apartment building and a twenty-two-unit apartment building, plus the rehabilitation of four existing apartments. Last month, we were here and the board granted an extension of that variance for one year and also granted site plan approval. As a result of, uh, wetlands delineation, Mr. DeVitra will explain, we had to reconfigure the apartments, and we are here tonight reducing from forty units to thirty-eight units, and we'll explain why. Resolution twenty-two zero seven stated in pertinent part, the Borough of Glassboro zoning board finds that the use variance relief as well as the bulk variance relief of the pre-existing lot with a combined sign yard requested in would be consistent with the municipal land use law and the land use ordinance of the Borough of Glassboro. We submit to you that for the reasons that you found in connection with the original variance, that the reduction of twenty units and twenty units to eighteen and twenty likewise would be consistent with the master plan and the ordinance for the same reasons you found the original. I'd like to call Mr. DeVitra.
Well, well, sure. Now, I'm gonna ask Mr. DeVitra to raise your right hand. Do you swear firm testimony about to give us true and correct, the best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
Well, thank you. Welcome back.
Mr. DeVitra, would you explain why we are here tonight?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, everyone. I, I, I don't wanna overconfuse you, but I have three exhibits. Uh, so this is the application of PVA for the apartments on Delcy Drive. Uh, this exhibit is the actual exhibit that we presented when the original use variance was granted, uh, showing a single drive off of Delcy Drive, the existing apartment building along Delcy Drive, and then two buildings, twenty units each, symmetrical around the drive with parking and a parking to the rear. And in particular, this was a conceptual plan, and typically what we do at conceptual plan, and we look at available inventory GIS maps, state maps. This was the area of the wetland, uh, that we based our conceptual design on. Provided the testimony as to compliance with the master plan, compliance with the intent of the master plan, uh, what the existing zoning was, and it would not have a negative or detrimental impact on the public and would be a benefit. And the board granted the use variance for that subject to us coming back with site plan.
So, that's A one, right?
That's A one.
We're gonna mark that A one?
Yes.
Okay.
Subsequent to the use variance, then we proceed with detailed design, detailed engineering, surveys, uh, actual formal wetland delineations, field delineations. Uh, we actually submitted the wetland delineation to the state. They certified the wetlands, and this was the site plan that was presented at the last meeting, which was subsequent to our findings. Well, the current, this was what we had shown as the original wetlands based on the inventory maps. The actual delineation by DEP declared this is wetlands, which really constrained our open space at the back of the site. Consequently, we modified the design, so instead of having twenty units on the left coming in the drive and twenty units on the right, we had designated nine just to allow an area adjacent to the wetlands in the buffer here and switched the other unit over to here, so we had eighteen and twenty-two. That was the design of the plan. Nothing really substantially changed other than the layout of those buildings. The board granted us preliminary and final site plan to this plan, um, but we need to modify the variance that was originally granted for twenty, twenty and twenty, which was the conceptual plan. So, I'll mark this as A two?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, this is, this was, was A one at the last meeting, but.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's A two. So the plan, as a result of the concern, and, and we perceived the concern with the board. So the plan, as a result of the concern, and we perceived the concern with the board as putting too many units into the site. It was too tight, possibly too tight with the wetlands. We've now modified the plan and this is the plan that was submitted along with the architectials. We have the existing apartment building up front. We have nine units or eighteen units on the left, maintaining the open space behind that. We reduced the building on the right, so instead of having twenty-two units, we now have twenty. So the original variance was granted for forty new apartments. The amended plan that we're here tonight with is for thirty-eight, not eighteen and twenty on this side. Consequently, we're able to move the parking area forward, create a greater open space for recreation and use and buffer to the stormwater basin at the rear of the site. And that is the extent of the modification, but consistent with the original use variance that the board considered, there are no changes to...
Right, I got a little bit of a puss on my face and I might as well get to it because it's, you know, the issue. So what happened, and we understand that sometimes, you know, life intervenes and things get a little sideways, wetlands always an issue because, for example, tonight, we're going to have an extension on the use variance approval. So you had asked for that at the last meeting, one year, one-year extension. Then there was the approval of the preliminary and final site plan as you just testified to. But that was for eighteen and twenty-two units. So we had public notice. We, as I recollect, had a few people here on that site plan review. You see where I'm going with this? You're now coming in here for an amended use variance, which you need to do. And I get that, but then if they favor you with an approval, you'll now have an amended use variance that doesn't comport with your approved site plan.
Correct.
Okay, so...
To clarify, and I understood that, that we are revising the site design to lessen the density.
Right.
And the preliminary and final site plan were approved subject to conditions stipulated in the board's professional review letters, which required us to revise, revise the plans for additional landscaping, address stormwater drainage and so forth. As part of those revised plans, if the board should grant the amendment to the variance for the eighteen and twenty units, thirty-eight units now, we would incorporate that in the revised plans for the professionals if the board would see that satisfactory.
And you would come back for a preliminary amended preliminary and final?
If we needed to come back for amended preliminary and final.
Well, I guess the part, um, it's very clumsy and I'm struggling here because I don't want to be too plain, but if I came out to be heard about the application, because you have to push out notice, and then, and I know what you're saying is, well, what's the big idea? We're actually reducing the intensity. We're not the same, we're not increasing it, we're reducing it. But it's...
Mr. House, why is it any different than the requirements for a perfected plan? The plan that gets presented and approved is subject to a perfected plan. This in effect takes into consideration the professionals' opinions and...
It's not a perfected plan. You changed the plan. A perfected plan would be what got approved with the eighteen and twenty-two units and then Mr. Casabun wanted, I don't know, the trash enclosure to show you this or Ms. Adamson wanted a little something else over here. And then you conformed the plan to meet with Mr. Casabun's requirement, Ms. Adamson's requirement, and that's the perfected or the conformed plan, but nobody said, take two units apart, two units away. That's not perfecting the planet. That's your idea, which I fully appreciate and it's your prerogative. I mean, you can do it. Free country, right? But you put the board in an awkward spot because remember, you know, the board wants to be comfortable because we always, we're always worried about jurisdiction, right? Do we have jurisdiction? Do we have proper notice out there? And I would think that really it's two sides of the same coin, because if we're concerned about it, you should be concerned about it, because you're the guy who's spending the money and building the thing. I'm just putting it out there. I think it's worth visiting, unless you're telling me you think I'm crazy here, because I'm thinking it's an issue.
So if the, if the, you know, let me speak with, let me speak on the record with the attorney.
All right, we're going to recess for five minutes while they discuss this.
Thank you.
The ping of life.
Yeah.
Terry's must order bank stocks.
Makes up for that computer thing, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Feel better?
You're sorry you came back from vacation, right? I know, it's like, I want to see that John Allen, oh boy.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, in discussing this with the, with the average, we would like to proceed with the request for tonight. If the board grants it tonight, we will be back with notice to the public seeking site plan approval, preliminary and final for eighteen and twenty, or a total of thirty-eight new units.
Right. Right, understanding that, you know, we've, it's all been put out there, like, that's why it's abbreviated tonight. And if you came back, it would be abbreviated, but it would be noticed, open, and we're all covered.
There are apologies.
No, no, no. A win's a win. I mean, if it all works out, then it all works out, right?
So the issue for my presentation is for the board granted, originally granted a use variance for four existing, pre-existing, and then twenty and twenty. We've now amending that use variance for four existing, pre-existing, eighteen and twenty. So thirty-eight apartments on this site, thirty-eight new apartments on this site plus the four existing.
Right, but you're still wedded to those four, those four units that you're going to...
Right, thirty-eight plus the four existing. If you grant, that's our request for tonight, if you grant that, then we have to amend the site plan and approval that you've given for eighteen and twenty-two. Just to clear, clear the air on that, so it's going to be eighteen and twenty.
Now, Mr. Chairman, may I just be a little, just a final thing and then I'll be quiet, I promise? Ask him one last question? So, you know, it just, when you look at the site, you got those four units. If you got rid of those four units, would it free you up to essentially have the same number of units as you were initially looking to have, like twenty and twenty? Because you could relocate them?
Well, the four units were pre-existing apartments.
Oh, no, we, we understand.
Right, and then the, and the applicant, because they were pre-existing, he has proceeded with a building permit and invested in total, I don't know, any...
So he's already in?
They've already renovated, they're not occupied as of...
He's in, all right, all right, all right. I withdraw the question. All right, forget it. Forget it. That's the answer. Got it? Thank you.
Anything further? Anything further?
Not for me, thank you.
Any questions in the board? Mr. Casabun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can really just make a statement. I didn't issue an updated engineering letter or a different engineering letter for, for this specific amended use variance application. The changes that have been discussed or the changes that were proposed don't significantly change the site engineering in a significant way. It's important, the number of buildings is important for planning purposes, but for the site engineering, it's something that if the board does approve the request tonight, it rolls, the comments roll into the next iteration of the layout. That's all I would have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Adamson?
Uh, we do have a letter and it, it basically reiterates what Mr. DeVitro said with the number of units and how they were changing the, the number of apartments.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, do I have a motion open to the public?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about what we're hearing right now? With nobody coming forward, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Motion to close, public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. It's the pleasure of the board.
Now, this is just, let's remind ourselves, because I get confused sometimes. This is just going to be a motion for an amended use variance to reflect this change of rehab four existing units plus one building of eighteen units and another building of twenty. So that's baked in and of course, anything else that was spread on the record, that's why we're here.
And then come back to final.
Well, and it's also contingent on an amended preliminary and final, and that's what was also spread on the record. Painfully, I apologize. It took a while.
I'll move that we approve the, uh, application with the items that our solicitor has pointed out.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
You have a second?
Can you have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Perner.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
Mr. Moonin.
Four.
All right, there you go. Good, stay safe.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you always.
Anything from the workshop committee?
This was the, uh, on West, not West Avenue. You know, anyhow.
State Street.
Huh? State Street, thank you. I'm not with it today. There's applications in for a, uh, recreational marijuana site and the sites for, um, parking and what's going to be demolished and what's going to stay there. All of that sort of thing was discussed at the workshop. And, uh, it has to move on from there, but it's, you know, that was the...
Still moving forward.
Yeah. Like always, you know, we argued about parking, but, you know.
Well, yeah, on State Street.
Yeah. Getting on it and getting off of it are a bit of a problem, so...
Yeah.
Other than that.
That's it? All right. We got Mr. Allison's report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've got a couple of things. We, um, we had the extension of the use variance approval for PVA investments. So it's just a one-year extension, reduced to a resolution, just very simple, just giving them a year. And of course, you know why we talked about it tonight, so for your consideration, Mr. Chair members.
All right, R twenty-three zero seven PVA Investment Extension Use. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We should do a roll call about it if you want to.
Roll call? All right, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Perner.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
Mr. Moonin.
Four.
Now, Mr. Chairman members, name you haven't heard for a little bit, Mike Satilli. So he's been busy trying to get his approval actually built and has had some, it's a little bit of a troubling site with the county because of the access. So he requested an extension on his approval and so respectfully, he asked the board to give him a year. So it would be from November nineteen, twenty twenty, but we're going to put him out to November twenty twenty-three. He was a little asleep on his rights.
Yeah.
But we know that he's a long-time Glassboro fellow, a sole individual, and, um, and life intervenes, so for your consideration.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero eight, Michael Satilli, extension for use variance and site plan. Do I have a motion?
Second.
For a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Perner.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
And Mr. Moonin.
Four.
And that was it, Mr. Chair members. Thank you.
All right, do we have any old business? Any new business? Anything from the public? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? So be it.
Well, happy St. Patty's Day, everybody.
You doing anything special?
Rubens for me.